Night, again Cadillac Planning Commission, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
April twenty-second.
Oh, I'm reading the wrong. Yeah, how about April? My eyes are on the top line, I'm sorry. How about April twenty-second, because mushrooming still isn't any good.
That'll work.
My eyes just zagged up, sorry. Why put these on?
You were right.
I was right.
Your agenda is since March twenty-third.
So sorry.
It does.
Oh, I caught a error.
No, you read it.
Did I print them wrong?
I don't know what you did, Don.
Are the minutes right?
I was, I was reading all the other.
You read it right.
Agenda's on top.
Yeah, I read it right.
We'll just read the sentence.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, this, okay. How about everybody join me for the plug of allegiance?
I plug allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right along. Roll call, please, Ms. Daniel.
Philkins?
Here.
Host?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Basher? Bowman?
Here.
Fent? Putman?
Here. Thank you. Uh, approval of our agenda for this evening for the correct month of April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four?
Second.
Putman?
Yes.
Basher? Bowman?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Fent? Rice?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Then, uh, approval of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes, which are correct, by the way. And they weren't too long to read.
Approval of the minutes.
Wasn't.
On the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Have you made a motion and I'll support?
Bowman?
Yes.
Fent? Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Basher? Putman?
Yes.
Good to see we have a few people tonight in the audience, because we have a public hearing this evening. Hopefully, that's why you're all here. Uh, pertaining to the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-nine community recreation plan. Having read that, Mr. Wallace is going to guide us through that before I open a public hearing and educate us all.
Thank you. The community recreation plan is a plan that has to be updated every five years per the state of Michigan in terms of us remaining grant-eligible and so forth. Much of what you'll see in the plan today is a continuation of things that were in the previous plan, but there's also quite a bit of updates to certain parks of what we're trying to achieve on the recreation front. So I'll just kind of go through some of the major points and changes from the last plan to the, to the current plan. On this slide, you basically have the principal players. I should also mention that this plan is not just a city of Cadillac plan that we're doing at in concert in collaboration with the Cadillac area public schools. And been working with their officials. And we also have a recreation committee which has both city staff and school staff that were also involved in the plan. These are the recreation goals that were kind of driving the plan, and I can read through those. Strengthening participation and collaboration between the Cadillac area public school district, the city of Cadillac, Wexford County, to equality of life for the community. To improve the walkability of the city and to promote safe bicycle trails and routes throughout the city. To facilitate recreational opportunities related to our natural resource base. Maintain and implement upgrades to existing recreational facilities as needed to meet the needs of residents and those who enjoy these public conveniences. To build new facilities to address recreational deficiencies and to make sure that there are recreational opportunities for all facets of the population. Maintain an ongoing evaluation of current and proposed recreation facilities about barrier-free accessibility. Where feasible and practical, ensure that all facilities are designed and constructed and maintained to be universally accessible. And improve the planning, location, and development of tourism-oriented recreational facilities to strengthen the area's economy. One of the things that has to be in the plan is a complete community profile. I haven't copied over all the, the data, but just to give you some idea of who we're planning for. The city of Cadillac has ten thousand three hundred and seventy-one residents. The county has, uh, three thou, or thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-three. Obviously, the Ca, city of Cadillac can't be expected to provide recreation for the entire county. But we do, to some degree, provide recreational services to some of the adjacent township residents who, who make use of our facilities. The Cadillac area public schools in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year had a little over three thousand students. And that number over a decade or so has fluctuated between three thousand and thirty-five hundred. So that'll give you some kind of idea of what the school population is. We have four thousand five hundred and seven households in the community. And of all our housing units in the community, sixty-one percent are owner-occupied and thirty-nine percent, thirty-nine percent are renter-occupied housing units. This is chart is a simplistic drawing of how recreation is handled. Of course, on the city side, we have the city council, uh, and then the city manager, and then working downward through the public works and community development department. On the school side, you have the Cadillac area public schools board, uh, the CAP superintendent, and then the community schools program director. We also have a recreation advisory board which serves, uh, both the city and the school district in terms of reviewing the develop, uh, the recreation plan and, uh, providing their recommendations and edits to the plan. And that actually has happened before tonight's meeting. The recreation committee has reviewed the draft of the plan, and they made a number of changes which we have already made to the plan. And now it's to the point where it needs to have, uh, planning commission approval, city council approval, and then also the CAPS board approval. The Cadillac advisory board is composed of persons representing various recreation-focused organizations approved via a city-school recreation agreement. The advisory board collectively gathers input and makes recommendations to the city and the CAPS, CAPS on established and proposed programming and facilities. They're, they're involved in the preparation, review of the recreation plan, and for ongoing input on recreation matters. And that's an important point, too. This plan does not have to stay static for five years. We, we can address this plan annually or on an as-needed basis to update the plan as needed. If new ideas come forward, new projects that we need to include in the plan to become grant-eligible, that's available to us at any given time that we choose to process that. This map, a little hard to see, but in the plan, we do, we have mapped out all the park locations in the city and also all the school locations where all the facilities are located. Getting into park sites, one of the big things that we did in this plan that wasn't done in the previous one is we chose to classify the parks. We have two, what we're calling community parks for the city, which is Diggins Hill and Kenwood Park. We also are letting those two parks do double duty as neighborhood parks because they're large enough and can contain enough facilities to serve both the larger city population and also the local neighborhood population. The neighborhood parks, of course, are Kenwood and Diggins, but then also we've added the Kiwanis-Wittier Park, which is a small neighborhood park on the north end of the city. We are also blessed with a number of what I'm classifying as linear parks. And that includes Lake Shore Park, which has the Keith McKellup Walkway, the Clam River Greenway, which runs from Lake Cadillac all the way out to the Casa Fields, the White Pine Trail and Trailhead, which is actually a regional facility that extends sixty-two miles from Cadillac down to the, um, Grand Rapids area, just short of Grand Rapids. And the Lake Cadillac Bicycle Path, which is simply the bike path system that goes around Lake Cadillac. We are also blessed with a number of specialty parks. Those include the City Park, which is the historic, um, park in the center of the city where numerous events, art shows, and Beer Fest and everything is held. The creation of the Plaza, which is right off of City Park, and the Market are, I've grouped together as one location for a specialty park. We also have the Cadillac area Dog Park, which is on the north end of the city, near the industrial parks. We have the former, um, Casa Fields, which I think is under the Walter Kaiser Park. Then we have the new Casa Fields, which is on the north edge of the city. And we have the Chris Blackburn Memorial Skate Park, which is, uh, just, just before you get to the, the high school. And then we have a very small piece of land on Lake Cadillac, which is called Forest Lane Park, which really doesn't have any facilities, it just has, I think, one picnic table there, but wanted to include it in the inventory. And then for state parks, the William Mitchell State Park, which everybody knows is a major facility on the west side of Cadillac. One of the ways to look at what we need to have done in the recreation plan is to establish recreation standards. These are standards that I created. I took them largely from a state resource, which they use statewide and actually nationally where they build in typical standards for various recreation facilities. I've adjusted some of the standards from what was included in their inventory just to, to take into account more what I felt was matching the local demand for these facilities. And so you can see the standard it's set. And with ten thousand people, you can quickly estimate, you know, with how many facilities per two thousand or five thousand, how many facilities that we would need. And those facilities are all identified on the far-right column of, if we use those standards, that's the amount of facilities we would need. And then, of course, we have to compare that to what we have at present. So I took that table and expanded it to look at our existing facilities. And you can see by comparing, uh, that we are deficient, not severely deficient, except with the exception maybe of pickleball courts, deficient playgrounds, softball fields, soccer fields, and pickleball courts. So, uh, that is something that will be identified and worked on in the action plan section of the plan. In addition to working off of, um, standards to determine deficiencies, another thing that many communities do is define observed or perceived recreational deficiencies. We did a survey, online survey, of what people wanted to see in the community. And so we identified those facilities that people identified in the survey. And we also used what people who are observing our recreational facilities have identified as perhaps being overused or insufficient to, to deal with demand. And you can see here that the highest response was that there was a need to do a, have an addition of pickleball courts in the community, upgrades to existing basketball courts, and upgrades to the Diggins Hill Park in general. And we'll be talking a little more in-depth about that in a little bit. Moderate response, uh, ice skating rinks at Diggins Hill and in general, restrooms at the Market and Diggins Hill. I should mention now that we currently have a project going where we're going out to bid soon on restrooms being added to the Market as part of the process to include overhead doors. So that, that one's already being worked on. Playgrounds in general, skate park improvements and supporting equipment, bicycle paths in general. And that might be designated paths, like the one that goes around Lake Cadillac, or simply building, completing the network on our street system, which is part of our complete streets, uh, policy in the city. Then also additional signage and the addition of sculptures and murals on the north side of Lake Cadillac. And then we had some limited response for the following activities. It doesn't mean they're not important, just means they weren't mentioned as often in the survey. Exercise stations, expansion of picnic area at Diggins Hill, sledding improvements at Diggins Hill, walking trails, thinning out the trees at Diggins Hill, outdoor classroom and pavilion with seating at the Bogstone Properties. That's actually a, uh, those are actually properties that are outside the city and a number of miles north of the city, but I think they're used by the school for, uh, natural education for, on those properties. Lighting along the White Pine Trail between Holly Road and Sunnyside Drive, adding benches along the White Pine Trail behind the Harborview Apartments, more recreational gathering areas for youth supervised, rental business which rents out kayaks, bikes, boats, and pontoons, et cetera, and better accessibility between Baker College and the YMCA to nearby neighborhoods. From looking at the deficiencies we have, we've identified from the standards and from the perceived or observed deficiencies, I created this recreational deficient summary, which would probably be the focus of what we would be working on, probably in a, kind of a priority to address, would be, uh, to add a neighborhood park in the southern portion of the city. We've set a standard to try to have a neighborhood park within approximately a quarter mile so that we have recreation that's walkable to all our neighborhoods. And the southern portion of the city is the only section of the city that does not have a park within walkable area. We've been monitoring properties in that area. One of the possibilities might be the southern portion of the Cooley School site. The other might be some properties that are owned by either the Retirement Village or the Mobile Home Complex, uh, off of Pearl. There's additional land that could be used there to create a neighborhood park. And the two playgrounds we need in total, uh, one would be at Diggins Hill Park. And I should mention now that it's current, the current rotary, uh, direction to support a new park at Diggins Hill, and in the process right now of fundraising to, to do a park at Diggins Hill. And the other would be eventually to install one when we secure the appropriate location on the south part of the city. To add one more softball field, one more soccer field, five pickleball courts, additional bicycle paths, and that would be both in-street and separated paths, additional walking paths, additional facilities at Diggins Hill, which would include walking paths, sledding hill, pickleball courts, adding new courts. We have some, um, issues with trying to merge pickleball with tennis. I don't think it's made either side happy, the pickleball players or the tennis players happy. So it might be beneficial to look at ultimately separating the pickleball from the tennis and, and get each of their facilities to be geared towards exactly what they're doing. The tennis courts are already showing some wear at Diggins Hill. So, um, some either repair or replacement as appropriate for the tennis courts and other winter-oriented activities. Some of the history behind Diggins Hill and some of the material we found is a lot of people have memories of, of Diggins Hill Park being the wintertime park where they did everything from ski to sled to skate, just enjoying a lot of wintertime activities at that park. And then the question becomes, do we, do we honor those memories and, and, and stay with that process and continue on that path? So that's something that we'll have to make the decision regarding. Continue to make improvements to the White Pine Trail. That would include a micro park, maybe more. Right now, we're in the process, as part of the Consumers Prosperity Grant, of putting a micro park along White Pine Trail, which would include some exercise stations and a mural wall to dress up the trail, uh, along the White Pine Trail. It's been suggested, because of the intensive use of the White Pine Trail, not just by bicycle users, but by walkers and other people to, uh, to the part of the trail that's closest to downtown, to add lighting to that trail so that it become a more safe facility for walkers and bikers alike. And to add benches behind the Harborview Apartments. Also, improvements to the Clam River Greenway, both expanding the Clam River Greenway. That might mean picking up some additional parcels that are close to the greenway, which would facilitate, uh, more observation or casual use or observation of the river along the, the greenway. Uncovering paved-over sections of the greenway and creating a linear park. I don't know if you recall, but we had, uh, Michigan State University do a visual plan of what Mitchell Street corridor could look like. And part of that plan that they developed was to show the uncovering of the Clam River as it crosses through, uh, Mitchell Street. And that's been raised again because of the issues with the, uh, the culverts at Wexford Jewelers. So, uh, it's, it's an issue that's still out there, but their, their idea was to, uh, to uncover that section. And when they, and when we had the public meeting to show that, it was one of the projects that a lot of people were excited about. In addition to the micro park on the White Pine Trail, we're also proposing one at Haynes Street, which is similar, where we're creating an area which would have a picnic area, a small parking lot, lighting, and possibly some playground equipment to just have people enjoy, um, that area of the, the Clam River and, and be an asset for that particular neighborhood. And then upgrades and musical instrument additions to the Sound Garden and additional art features. Every, oh, three or four years, it seems like there's some upgrade to the Sound Garden or some need to upgrade the equipment. I think that's something that'll probably continue, but it's, uh, seems to be a well-used facility. And they've added some kinetic art to that with the, um, oh, they had a metal flower, I think, kind of spinning in the park, things like that. So it makes it a really nice facility. Specific things in the action plan for Diggins Hill. To resurface or rebuild the tennis courts, which there are six of. Add pickleball courts, right now, which is proposed at four. Design and implement system of walking trails. There will be a need to have those walking trails gel with the fairways for the disc golf in that park. And so there'll probably be a need to coordinate the, the planning for that. To improve the grades of the sledding hills, and the thought being that the sledding hill could be, um, manicured to create one part of the hill for more of the smaller children, and another part that would be more challenging or steeper or longer, that would be available for the older children there. And that would require some modest regrading of the facility to make that happen. And to add the playground, which I mentioned earlier, the Rotary Club is, is working on. And ultimately, to add a restroom building, which is usually a costly endeavor, but will probably require, uh, use of grants if, if we ever pursue that. It'll also depend on whether we're able to add more active recreation at that park. More things at Diggins Hill, uh, trail development, and that would be for walking, possibly redesigning some of the disc golf fairways, and also looking at the option for cross-country skiing. Also looking at disc golf improvements, which might be course redesign, improved launchpads, and wayfinding signage, kind of showing where the direction of the different holes are for the baskets that are, are there for the, uh, holes for the, the disc, uh, disc golf. And as part of the winter activities, to add a warming shelter. That would go along with the, an ice skating rink, add a fireplace, much like I think they've done it, the one Cadillac pathway, uh, north of the city. And then also, uh, some additional parking lot improvements, particularly if we are able to add more facilities there. Other ideas, to develop a forestry management plan for the park so that, uh, we take the best care of the, the tree stock there or see if there's a need to improve upon the tree canopy there. And then finally, to update the Diggins Hill Master Site Plan. In the current plan, there is a master site plan, which has many of the things that we're proposing in the new plan. But we're also feeling the need to see, to check with the community to see if they feel that the old plan is right, still right on target, or whether we need to look at some possible other things that should happen at that park. Then we're also looking to Kenwood Park, which would, is also a neighborhood park and a community park, to have interpretive trails with signage, parking improvements, running space with obstacles such as a climbing wall and exercise stations, update the boat launch to include dredging and expanding from one to two docks. Then the Lake Shore Park, which is our long linear park where the McKellup Walkway is, to repair or replace the existing dock by Pine Street. That, that is something that the city's having evaluated to see if the existing dock, if it makes more sense to, uh, to repair that dock or, or to replace it. Add a fishing pier into Lake Cadillac near the restroom building next to the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion. At different times, we've had concept drawings showing anywhere from two to three docks in the downtown area, in that area. And then specific to the Keith McKellup Walkway, to add a walkway bridge behind the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion. That would allow people to continue using that walkway in its entirety all the way to the library, even while events might be going on at the Rotary Pavilion. And that facility, that walkway would look much like the bridge that's currently on the trail now by the Sound Garden. And, uh, it would be out into the water a little bit, so it'd be a very nice pleasant walk across that walkway where you could enjoy viewing the water and then also continuing on to the end of the pathway. The addition of exercise stations, add wayfinding signage and distant markers. A lot of people use the McKellup Walkway, uh, as their, uh, way to exercise. And we were looking at possibly trying to see if we could put maybe quarter-mile markers along a pathway so people could track exactly how far they're walking or jogging, uh, on that trail. Uh, replace the restroom building by the Blue Playground. I guess that's beginning to age quite a bit. And then again, um, doing some work with the boat launch, dredging the area and expanding the launch from one to two. Uh, again, that would increase the ability for, uh, visitors to the area to make use of the lake if they're, uh, traveling to the faci- to the lake from outside the area or even inside the city, uh, with boats that they're storing at their, their own, uh, home or in a storage facility. Uh, this is, uh, another big project. Uh, the community center, right now, the community center, um, is completely filled up. Um, and it's undergone, um, quite a few, uh, building, general building upgrades. Uh, those would probably continue, um, making sure that it's kept up to date with respect to proper painting inside and out. I know when Up North Arts went in, they, uh, they got volunteer help to, uh, paint all the different rooms that they were using in the facility. And I think they requested from the city to, uh, to do, uh, painting of the exterior of the building. They have a lot of plans and there's a l- lot of pictures in the recreation plan. They want to create an art walk, which will stretch from the northwest corner to the northeast corner and around the east side of the building. They want to have landscape gardens with a paved walkway. Uh, the walk to include tree carvings, three D and two D art. Uh, they want to have lighting, uh, for the art pieces. They want to have irrigation for the gardens. Uh, they want to remove or replace the retaining walls that are out there now. Remove the concrete pads and have seedings s- spread throughout the, the area. Um, more activities at that community center. Uh, at the Up North Arts entrance, there would be landscaping and artwork. They want to turn the rock beds into hosta beds. And art, artwork would be lining the entrance to the facility. They want to also have an Up North Arts outdoor patio, which would have a brick floor, sitting areas with flowers, benches and artwork on the walls. And I believe this might already be done too, when they approached the city to pave the out, or paint the outside of the building. They were going to paint the, uh, drill deck and, uh, it had a number of Navy logos, uh, on the drill deck and they were going to repaint those historical logos back into the facility. And then they wanted to have a new vestibule entrance to the drill deck like that for the senior center so that, uh, you could enter the building without having the drafts of the weather, uh, go right into, into the facility. Then on the Clam River Greenway, I mentioned before that there would be the micro park at Haynes Street. And that micro park would include a picnic area, picnic shelter, parking lot, lighting, pedestrian bridge, which we're not sure right now if that will happen or not. The initial prices on that came in a little high, so, uh, we may not do that. Uh, also including benches and to include, uh, better railings over the Clam River, which would also have, uh, an artistic component to that. For the White Pine Trailhead, um, the action plan has lighting to be installed on the trail from Sunnyside to South Street. Add exercise stations and mural wall next to the trail near Cadillac Shores Drive. That's a project which is in process right now and that we do have the funds for in a consumer's grant. Add a small playground to the trailhead. That was something that was, uh, developed as we were, uh, looking at the final plans for the trailhead. Uh, but we had to make some reductions in that, uh, project as we were trying to finalize that project. Add a bike sculpture to the trailhead. Add benches along the trail behind Harborview Apartments. Thin some of the vegetation along the trail to improve view, viewing of the trail for safety reasons. And add a sidewalk connection from Holly Road to, to the trail at the location of Marvel Street Extended. People coming down Holly Road, there's no sidewalk there. And, uh, trail, uh, ex- is right there by the street extending all the way into town. So with just a simple connection, uh, from Holly Road to the trail. Uh, people could then get out of the, the street and use the trail as a walking path right into, uh, downtown. Uh, I mentioned the new park on the south side, I won't go over that again. Uh, I mentioned a couple sites that we, that we might use for that. The Chris Blackburn Memorial Skate Park, um, to continue to monitor the condition and replace and update the equipment as needed. Additional sta- skate park equipment such as banks and rails would enhance user demand. So we would be looking whether there continues to be, uh, demand for these, uh, added enhancements. The Cadillac Area Dog Park, um, as it was being developed and since it's opened up, there's been a desire to, uh, continue to make improvements such as including a water fountain, paved parking and restrooms, uh, in the future. Some of these things might be off a ways into the future just because of the, the, the demand in so many different areas, uh, of the city. And the Walter A Kaiser Park, which is the former, uh, Casa Baseball Fields. It's still being used for baseball and softball, along with occasional church softball functions and picnics. Uh, the Viking Softball Association upgraded some of the fields in twenty twenty-two as part of a Ca- Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce Leadership Project. Proposed future improvements for the park include, uh, renovation and reopening of the restroom, addition of a shade pavilion and a new identification sign for the facility. Uh, action plan for the City Park Plaza and Market. Uh, most of the plans for this area, uh, are for the market. Uh, the plan, improvements for the market, which are currently in process and will be accomplished in the near future, would be to include overhead doors to allow for all-season usage. Uh, the addition of public restrooms, drinking fountains, full-height projection screen and projector, speakers and P A system, additional heating element, solar lighting, a ninety-inch television screen, large circulating fans, bicycle racks, rain garden and charge, uh, car charging stations. And it wasn't that the city really wanted to go so gung-ho on all these things, but it was almost kind of the things that you needed to include in the grant proposal to get the, the grant. And I believe we, uh, received a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, grant to, uh, help, uh, put these facilities in. So without going as far as all the, having all these additions, uh, it would have reduced our potential to get the grant that we were su- successful in getting for this project. And then, uh, also to replace picnic tables and benches at, as needed at City Park. Um, as this proj- as this plan has been prepared, it's been like a year in process. A number of these improvements, I think, are already completed. Uh, when we first started this plan, they weren't completed yet, they were just still on, uh, planning, uh, uh, in the plan approval stages, which was improvements to the football stadium, new football field and running track, which are in. I think we've relocated the utility line from under the football field so there wouldn't be a need to tear into the football field at a later date if we had trouble with the, uh, utility lines. And, uh, they built, uh, eight new tennis courts, uh, on the site to replace the older co- courts. Other plans that they're looking for in the future is to add additional sidewalks and to add some more supporting equipment for the stadium, which would include additional lighting and sound equipment. Um, action plan for Camp Tarenta. Although it's owned by, uh, CAPS, the recreation programming at the camp is managed by the YMCA. And the planned improvements include, uh, replacement of several older cabins and the purchase of recreation equipment, including canoes, kayaks and archery equipment. Um, Community Cultural Arts Center, this is a, a new idea. Uh, right now, the current, uh, community center is at full capacity. And there's still a lot of cultural needs that are, are needed in the community. Um, we've had discussions during this process of establishing a new community center where we would, uh, add even more, uh, facilities to what's exists at the current one at a new location. And, uh, that might be where many of the facilities are all at the same location. Or if it becomes problematic, uh, some of the facilities might be at separate locations. But it's probably something that we would also include as we undertake the master plan preparation for the city. Um, the idea is to have a lot of shared space. Instead of all these cultural entities having this, having separate space, which they only use periodically throughout the year. If we could put all these entities into one location, we could then, uh, have them share that space and, and, and reduce costs in terms of, uh, not having to provide as much public space for that. And, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of like what we did with the, um, the, putting all the facilities in the downtown for our, our door, outdoor facilities, the Cadillac Commons. We put five facilities within six hundred feet of each other so that we were able to get increased use of all the facilities by being able to combine them together in, uh, in concert with each other. The same concept would be true if we could get a central facility that could handle all the cultural arts. Uh, we could have the whole thing exist, uh, possibly in close proximity, uh, to the Cadillac Commons. And then we could address both inside and outside cultural events, uh, for the city. Uh, uses that might be in this new cultural arts center would be, obviously, the continuation of the existing facilities, the senior center, genealogy center, art galleries, studios, uh, four to five hundred seat theater auditorium, gardens, classrooms, dance facility, lecture hall, museums, meeting rooms, kitchen facilities. And again, without having a, a study or plan, we wouldn't know if that would happen all at one location or multiple locations. But we would want to make sure that they happened in a manner that would, um, best allow us to have, uh, cross-synergy between the uses. We would continue, uh, working on a Lake Cadillac Management Program. In the past, we had a s- uh, targeted millage for that. That millage is expired. And, uh, right now, the, uh, activities that were being undertaken by that program are being absorbed through the general fund. Uh, this program will continue to be designed to control invasive plants within or around the Cadillac and in Lake Cadillac, control nuisance animals such as geese and, uh, restore natural shoreline around, uh, Lake Cadillac, uh, as feasible. Uh, some of you may know that we did do a number of years ago, quite a while ago, a test project, uh, out on the shoreline going towards the senior center where they took a small section and reestablished natural shoreline. Um, I think that's still something that, uh, maybe the jury's still out on whether we want to continue that or not. But right, for right now, it's still in the plan. And then some general things which, um, there aren't necessarily, uh, specific locations for. Uh, one would be to have a wayfinding sign program and that would be both for motorist wayfinding and then for walkability wayfinding along our different pathways. Uh, bicycle network, one of the things that you find out when you work in, uh, studying bicycle use is that the more that you're able to build a network, the higher, uh, a bike use that you see in a community. Um, w- once you get enough of the connections made, then people start to see the merit in, uh, doing more biking. Um, to continue to focus on barrier-free accessibility, both within our, uh, existing facilities and improving, uh, that accessibility at existing parks and facilities, but also making it a priority in any new facilities that we build. Um, there's a desire to continue to, uh, do more arts and culture projects in the community. Pickleball courts in general. Uh, another big idea that came up in the recreation plan was the idea of an indoor recreation center. Uh, and the school is also very interested in this, being in a very cold northern climate, uh, to create an indoor facility where you could have a lot of, uh, active recreation going on within a facility, um, that could be used year-round. That's an idea that, that people wanted to see in the plan. And, um, uh, the Lake Cadillac Bicycle Path to continue to monitor and improve on the bicycle path. I know there's a number of areas where the pathway is starting to be in decline and possibly need to be widened, uh, so that's on there. And also, uh, quite a few people have mentioned the idea of creating a fishing pier at the Causeway. A lot of people, I guess, fish off the shore at that location and they just think if we were to do a, a pier at that location, that it would, uh, really, uh, service the west side well and create a, another ac- activity center for that area. And other things that were mentioned was just, uh, having, looking at all our trails to see how we can improve safety, both from continuing to monitor whether people are gathering inappropriately along any portions of the trail. Making sure that we have things in place that improve safety, whether that be ca- cameras or, um, clearing out vegetation to improve better sightlines, things of that nature. Uh, so that was seen as an important thing that we should continue to, to look at as well. And that's kind of a quick run-through of the plan. Uh, the plan i- is here and has quite a bit more data in it, but I didn't want to keep you here all night.
Thank you, Senator.
But I thought that covered the major elements and, uh, yeah, if, if you wanted to open the public hearing.
So this information's on the website?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I had, I clicked on it and what Danielle sent out, so, yeah. I do have, can I ask a couple questions? Of course I can. Um, the tennis courts at Diggin's, I thought they were kind of resurfaced or something.
They were.
A bit ago.
They sealed them two years ago.
Well, yeah, and Rotary, I think, invested fifty thousand dollars to have them resurfaced at one point. But I think they need more than resurfacing.
That's what some folks are telling us now, that they might need to be rebuilt.
Cause then they crack, crack sealed them or crack filled them last summer or two summers ago.
Yeah, they look pretty bad.
Yeah.
Cause I thought that money got thrown at it, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the, d- does anyone know the number of disc golf, uh, things that are on Diggin's?
Eighteen halls.
Eighteen, thank you. And question on the Haynes Street thing where you want to do a picnic table or thing. How much land was given to the business there on Haynes Street? Cause isn't that where this is projected to be?
Yeah.
How much land is left that we wouldn't be interfering with them?
I can't remember.
Oh, I don't have the exact number. Um, it, it's not a real large area, but it's large enough to have a pavilion, uh, in the future. It's big enough to have a, about an eight, an eight, an eight-car parking lot and then also, uh, a, a picnic area and a small playground area.
It's not, it's not a big area.
I know, it's kind of weird shape.
Yeah, it is.
There's a, there's a really large tree in the center of the property. That's roughly about where the expansion of that business is going to go out to. If you look at the really large tree that's in the center of the property. That's about how far the business would extend.
Okay.
Questions as you were going, it popped in my head.
Okay. Uh, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing, uh, for anyone, uh, that, uh, would like to come forwards and give us any input at all pertaining to or against. like to come forwards and give us any input at all pertaining to or against or whatever John presented.
There's a sign-up sheet there, too, if you come up and speak, include your name and address on the sign-in sheet.
Hello, I'm John Sorry, I live at 201 Iroquois, next to Kenwood Park, and I've read the plan and thought we should really address Cadillac being such a hub, you know, we've got 131, M55, and 115 coming in, we should do the trails that go across the state, whether it be snowmobile trails, or hiking trails, or horse trails, or whatever, we should make sure they all come here to Cadillac. Downtown would be best. We need to enhance that hub by expanding the use with all forms of recreation. Cadillac is a tourist destination spot, and the more we could attract tourists, the better it's going to be. The proposed plan is spending less this year than the last plan, I think. Definitely need parks on the south side. I didn't see the action plan right in the recreation plan. Is the action plan in there?
Yes.
Okay. On the computer, I read it, and I didn't see the action plan. And so many of the appendices, A, B, C, D, and E, are not readable, the fine print, the printer's so fine, you can't read it on the computer, but I looked at this hard copy, you can't read them there either, not without a magnifying glass. It's kind of useless to put all these appendices stuff that you can't read. Table 19 on page 43, I don't think is understandable. One in 12, 2,000, is that one park for every 2,000 people? It doesn't say that on the chart, but it, how to read it. Diggins Hill improvements, it'd be nice to have a cost estimate on a lot of these enhancements you're talking about, and that'd be important for applying to grants. And that's thinking ahead, and a wish list is very important, but having some cost estimates go along with it. Cadillac Heritage Nature Trail is not properly showing on the plan, and it's used as, you know, for bird watching, and beaver study, and trapping, and everything else goes on there. We should talk about that more in the plan. I know it goes onto the state property, but it's still part of us in the city limits. And hunting should be prohibited on that Cadillac Heritage Nature Trail. Currently, it's not prohibited. And we got women with baby carriages and everything, and a guy running down the street with camo on, or down the path with camo on a shotgun, doesn't look good. The Cadillac Heritage Nature Trail was recently destroyed, a large part of it was destroyed by a giant mulching machine. If you ever walked out past Rose Avenue and walked the trail, they just made a mess. I think a committee known as Friends of Kenwood Park should be started. And that's about all.
Good ideas. Thanks, John.
Sure.
We could make you a chairman of that committee right away.
I'd want to.
I know you would.
My name's Paul Durk, and I'm a resident of the city of Cadillac, also a board member for the Disciplined Network of Northern Michigan. Wondering what is being done to address or enhance adaptive or accessible recreation in the plan, i.e. accessible playgrounds, accessible parks, with wheelchair-accessible picnic tables?
Well, the plan doesn't talk about specifics, other than the fact that we've built that into every project that we go to do. And we've also given a grade for accessibility for every one of the parks, which we're obviously going to be trying to work on improving. And so, and then every time, we usually have to go out for grants for almost all these projects, and usually, one of the critical items for us to do is to have strong accessibility standards built into these projects. Otherwise, we're not able to get the grants, which was also true of the market upgrades, and also with the recent White Pine Trailhead project, where we had to put in accessible equipment into the facility. So I imagine we could do more, say, specifics, but we, quite frankly, have been trying to build it right into our standard operating procedure when we look at any of these projects.
I have a question. I ride my hand cycle along the White Pine Trail quite often, regularly, and right there along the Harborview Apartments, when I'm coming in from a ride, it's a very, very strong smell of marijuana. I don't know where it's coming from, whether it's being used on the trail or there at the edge there at the apartments. I do believe that the White Pine Trail is a state park, is it not?
Yes.
Is, what's the status of marijuana use in a state park?
That I don't know the answer to offhand.
I believe it's illegal. I don't know.
I thought it was federal, not state, but I'm not the attorney.
You can't do it in public.
Correct, can't do it in public, I would agree, 100%.
That's another reason, too, why we brought up the idea of increasing views into these areas, so that people are doing things that they might be wanting to do because they're not very visible, they might not be willing to do if we had better views to some of these portions of the trail.
Okay. I may want to call the state, I may want to call the Department of Natural Resources, I don't know. You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, Andy Van Ols, 2005, Sunnyside Drive. What great problems, right? This is a fun meeting, you know?
Agreed.
Yeah.
I'm surprised you're here.
You know, I'm not supposed to be here.
No.
Yeah, I came in with somebody and they left, so here I am, you know?
You're always welcome.
But yeah, I did see, right up on the rec plan, but I didn't really get into it, and I thought, well, I can stay home, I can sit this one out. But you know, I'm very interested in the pickleball stuff, and so I guess, has anybody here played pickleball? And have you played here?
Mm-hmm.
Have you played other places?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so when you played, did you play, did you get the people together and go play? Or did you walk in and play somewhere?
Both.
Okay, because that's, this is my focus. I would like to see, pickleball is a community type of thing, so when I've played in other towns, they have the pickleball courts together, right? So you have six or eight courts or more, and then people show up with a paddle, and they get in and they're playing, right? Anybody would, like out at the Wex where we play, everybody knows that's where they're playing, and that's where they go. So now we have the new courts out on the trail here, and that's nice. And so, the problem is, I'm talking to people at pickleball, and you go, we've got some up at Diggins, now we've got some over here, and we've got them over at the Wex, and then you go, well, let's put one over here, and let's put another one over here, and pretty soon, there's nobody knowing where to go. So, which kind of seems like that would work okay, but it really doesn't. It will go, we got four people, and like if we go, if there are, both courts are filled over here, then you go, how do I get on? You know, you don't, it's not like, it's not like when we come in, and you go, all the eight courts are full, and then the next four people come in line when that court's vacated. And so, when you do it other places, it can dilute the effectiveness of having pickleball courts, right? So we all, and even in the summer, when there are pickleball courts available in other places, people will still meet at the Wex to play because that's where the people are, and then they might grab them and go somewhere. The other thing about that, and so, so I guess what I'm saying is that if, when Top was talking about putting money up for courts, I was like, well, it'd be great to have eight courts together, so you can have tournaments, and have the community involved, which will rent out motels and Airbnbs even, you know, and get more business with restaurants and community. And even if you go, it's not for tournaments, it would still be effective use for the community to get together and play, instead of going all over. And then the other part of that is, if I had a pickleball court, like right around the corner across the street from me, it would drive me nuts. I mean, they make a lot of noise, you don't think it, but that's like a Chinese water torture, you know? And you know, I wouldn't, I mean, my mom would go nuts, she doesn't like a barking dog, but that's a whole different story. Anyways, that's what I think, it would be worth looking into, trying to find a facility, the Diggins Hill is great, that was a great tennis location, it's a great, it's isolated, it's out of the wind, and it would be great to have a facility where people come and go, hey, have you played in Cadillac? So that's it for that. But then, when COVID was going on, I'd walk around the lake, so you could see all the improvements, and when we talk about the White Pine Trail, that was, yeah, there needs to be a lot of clearing, but, because it was creepy, because I'd get up early, it'd be dark, and I'd carry a flashlight, and then, you know, see other people, I'd turn on my flashlight, of course, it quit working, I'm like, wait, I saw somebody! You know, so I'd get creeped out, right? And I'm a big guy, so then I'd run into a girl occasionally that would walk in the morning, too, and she's not going down through that trail, so I think clearing that out would be a good idea. And I thought that it would be good as a tourist thing, like up on Sunnyside, if you could, you know, pick some of the less desirable trees out, then you have a lake view, and it's just all overgrown, you know, so it'd be a good park rec thing there. So anyways, I think this, I'm glad that my friends dropped me off. That's all I got.
Thank you. And yes, I live up by Diggins Hill, and I can hear them when they play pickleball.
Right.
Because it comes right across Boardman's Field, and if I'm out on my porch drinking coffee in the morning, I can hear them playing, yes. But I know what it is, so it's really not a bother, but yes, you hear it.
Yeah, you're ways away.
Oh, I am, yeah. Well, thank you, though. Anyone else this evening, any comments?
Another comment, I was glad to hear that something potentially works to widen the bike path around the lake. I commonly ride that, I rode that this afternoon, had four my, four my hand cycle, the front tire and then the rear tires, it's a tricycle type, the rear tires are approximately that far apart, and that bike path is not, is just barely widened enough, so it's not wide enough for my, for accessible braking.
At least to keep you safe, yes.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Barely wide enough for accessible braking.
Okay, anybody, anything else? Before I close public hearing, is all, so. We're good? Okay, at this time, then, we'll go ahead, close public hearing. And what else do you need us to do here, John? I mean, you fleshed so many ideas past us and stuff.
If you want any further discussion, you would have further discussion, if somebody, you know, is prepared to. We're looking for a motion to recommend to the city council that the recreation plan be approved. You can do that as presented, or you could suggest possible editing changes at this time, whatever your desire.
There's so much there that can be done.
I think it's a working document.
It, there.
It can be changed.
Yes, Mayor.
It can start somewhere.
It's a plan, yes.
And it's updated.
It's a working document, and as John, you stated earlier, if something new comes, if a new opportunity comes into the community, and it requires it to be a part of our recreation plan before we can write grants, then we would just bring it back and we would update it. So the grants could be.
I guess you could upgrade the school part, because the stadium is handled and stuff, so instead of having it showing they'd like to do, it's done.
That's true, that's probably an update that could be done right away.
Right.
And John, did you mention something about, one of the parks is not identified properly?
Yeah, the Heritage Trail is not shown properly.
Okay.
And I still think all the appendices should be readable or not.
Well, they could be readable if they were printed at larger size, but that's, most of the people can view this digitally, and then you can enlarge it, I think.
It's still hard, the resolution gets bad, even when you zoom in.
So why can't, why can't we do that? Why can't you do that?
Well, we can do that, it's going to take quite a bit of effort, we'd have to recreate the maps.
Just save the PDF at a little bit higher resolution.
Well, we could look at that, I'm not sure if it would help or not, but we could try it.
I do, and I have to do drawings for people.
Yeah, and again, we didn't, we didn't do anything to the maps, this is what sailed through with the last plan, yeah.
There are things that could be done with the existing document that would probably help and probably take care of what John wants, so he could blow it up on the computer and see what's what. I mean, I agree with you, I looked at them this morning, and I'm going.
Yeah, and quite frankly, some of those things, while they can influence the recreation, a lot of times, it's a mere requirement of the state, and they don't really add a lot to the plan, so you don't really need to know much about that information, but it's just required, so you put it in there. But it is quite a bit of additional cost. If we recreated them, you know, it could be, it could be a week or two weeks' worth of graphics work on that.
But if we're updating the recreation plan, we should update that as well, if it's needed.
Yeah, that's the big question, is it needed?
Well, in fact, the zoning map isn't even the newest one that's in front of us, it's like it's a 2008 version.
This map here, yeah.
No, Appendix E on the plan is dated 2008, maybe? It's so unreadable, you can't tell what the date is.
It's really small.
So maybe as part of our updating the recreation plan, that should be a part of the update.
Why does this say 2016? What's this about?
I'm talking about this one, John.
That one?
Okay.
It just doesn't, to me, it just doesn't make sense, I mean, although I understand what you're saying, it's a state requirement, but if we're going to have it out on our website, it should be, if it's a part of the document, people should be able to read it.
And update it to the most current information available.
Yes, I think that would be great.
I agree with that.
A couple of them are better than others, in fact, so it's not even all of them.
I have a quick question, there was a rustic, very rustic campground site, going down Pole Road, I don't even remember what it's called, it's off on the.
Hemlock.
Hemlock Park.
Hemlock Park.
Was that mentioned, and I don't remember reading that one?
It's not in the city, though.
Well, but they put in that bog one that's five miles out of town.
Right, but that's associated with the school.
Yeah, the only reason why it was included is because we're collaborating with the school, and people from inside the city who are attending those schools then go out to that facility.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's.
I just thought you covered a wide range of stuff on the lakes.
Yeah, that was the only.
Even Camp Torrance, it's not, but caps, okay.
But that's associated with the school.
My own stop as I go. Okay, all right. So who owns the other? DNR?
It's federal, Hemlock Park.
Hemlock, federal?
Hemlock's a federal, yeah.
Okay, thank you, audience.
So you need a motion to approve the recreation plan as presented?
Well, with the changes.
With some changes, with the changes, Danielle, can you, sorry, John?
No, run.
You have no.
So I.
I just want to understand what the motion needs to be.
Yeah, I have the changes of the.
Yeah, I'm, I have the changes of the football stadium and the appendices. Um, so I just put motion by to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine community rec plan with minor changes and make a recommendation to CAPS board and city council to approve the rec plan as presented.
Um, okay, are we going to mention the fact that we are going to update the rec plan graphics?
I think that was in there.
That's the minor changes I have.
That was the appendices.
Do you want that included, like those actual minor changes included in the motion?
Well, I just want to make sure we do them.
Yeah, I have-
You said update of the appendices, right?
Mm-hmm, and the football stadium to be-
Or perhaps in, in minor changes, say, including updating the appendices for readability and updating for the CAPS facilities upgrades.
Okay, run with it then, and I will type as you talk.
Oh, I was just adding to it. I only improve other people's work, I don't plan out.
His people. Tell my people so.
We have after minor cha, you have minor changes, right? And then comma, including, um, updating the appendices for readability and CAPS facilities improvements already made.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Sounds good to us.
Give me one second.
We have to upgrade the sentence for readability now.
Is someone going to support that?
I'll support it.
Who made the motion? I did.
I heard the mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
I support.
Okay.
Roll, please.
Bent, Rice?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Basher?
Yes.
Thank you. Alrighty. New business being none, old business none. Board member comments, any tonight? All good?
I would, I would like to mention that the gala, the Rotary Gala for the Diggins Hill Project is coming up on May fourth. I do have tickets available and we'd love to have, uh, any of you in the room. Um, it is a fantastic project and it's receiving incredible support from the community.
Yeah.
So, I'm really excited about it and it'll be a fun evening.
Oh, sure will, yeah.
Also, the Earth Day thing, it was this past weekend was a smash hit. It was well attended. Lots of folks came out, a lot of activities, people showed up, but most of the time that it was open.
Good weather.
Wonderful, it was.
A little breezy, good weather.
No children blew away or?
Children blew.
That's always a good-
Lot of kids. I'm not sure if this is during this portion or where, um, but, um, something I've been noticing, we had discussion here a few months ago when we granted, um, a, a variance to the zoning for the, um, Old Mancino's property. And now we have rental equipment showing up, um, not sure, uh, if that falls in what's allowed there zoning wise. It's just kinda seems to be whatever, uh, they want to be doing there.
In, in his defense, Greg, he did bring that up here in front of us.
He did.
But he did say he was gonna keep it behind the building, I think. But that was mentioned, that he, that was part of his plan. I believe it was when we were talking about him having some bins or something along the rail property back there where, where the railroad was. But I, I-
The zoning allow it, and the, the variance was not for that.
Would have been a special use permit we granted them, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, especially for the sheds.
And the sheds were there to facilitate controlling traffic, that people coming through. And so that was one of the rationales.
Well, so does the existing zoning use permit, the rental equipment?
I, I would think that it would require another amendment to the special use permit.
I would think so.
And who is zoning enforcement now? Who is our current zoning enforcement?
Well, it's-
It's code.
It, well, zoning is Danielle and myself. Um, other issues related to building conditions and blight is Juanita.
There has been letters sent to that property owner and we are trying to seek compliance on many different things with that property right now.
Okay, so it is being addressed.
So, but yeah, we're, we're trying to seek compliance with-
There also was, you know, we have a sign and flag ordinance. Was that part of it? Okay.
Does, does a special use permit require ongoing compliance?
So as part of your guys' special, um, use permit, you stated that, I would have to look at the actual verbiage of the motion, but, that he needed to comply with a whole commercial site plan that, to better scale than what was, was presented. And that has yet to-
Yet to be submitted.
What's the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, what's the next step?
It's all board member comments.
What's the next step to ensure compliance?
We would have to, um, check with our legal team unless John has insight on that.
Well, we could make, we could make one more contact if we're not successful in getting something relatively soon. Uh, it would be to turn it over to the attorneys.
Probably what you're gonna do to Chris Doyle too, so.
I'm sorry, what?
Chris Doyle, they haven't done what they were supposed to do on their building site as well.
Oh, that's true. I thought I was Chris Doyle, out of my Chris Doyle.
Well, I think we need to have a lot more money spent on enforcement. Right now, our department is running behind on any number of things that are equally important and things that have to be processed. And it's a quick case of prioritizing. And a lot of times, the enforcement just doesn't rise to the top because we have legal requirements. When people submit applications, they have to go through the process. And so that, and we have the burden of also trying to get a number of these plans completed, like we're trying to do tonight. We got the West Side Plan, we have other plans. And spending an inordinate amount of time on enforcement puts us way behind on our grant writing and other things, so it's-
Well, then why come before this, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
No, not a mayor.
If, um, if I may, um, this, John, I think goes back to the discussion that we were having about enforcement in general when we talked about Airbnbs, right? And so, you know, we as a council talked about, you know, if, if resources are needed to be able to, to be able to complete these necessary enforcements, then that needs to go to Marcus to say, these things are hanging out there, people are noticing. And, and that needs to become a part of that person or person's responsibility. Those additional resources are going to be approved by the council to make sure that this enforcement happens.
Well, the council authorized twenty-four thousand dollars to be used for enforcement. I guess that's up in the air, how that gets used.
All I'm saying is that this needs to go back to Marcus, this concern needs to go back to Marcus. I would ask you to take it back to Marcus, or I can talk to Marcus, and say, enforcement for Airbnbs was brought forward as a real concern. And I think that enforcement by businesses, when they come to the planning commission and they are approved for X and they continue to do Y, then we as a planning commission have a concern that we're not holding them accountable.
We, we need an additional capacity. I guess that's the simple answer.
Well, and, and I completely understand that. So that's why I'm saying we need to go to Marcus and say, here is another issue that we need to address.
And to piggyback onto that, which was the next thing, is the enforcement on our blight. You know, we can create all of these phenomenal plans and we have blight going on everywhere. After Pam left, there, nobody is enforcing blight.
And we did talk about that, Greg, just to let you know, when we were in work session, um, we did talk, because we were talking about this enforcement and, and the additional resources that are needed. And blight certainly is one of them. We want to be, we want to be gracious with people, but we also need to hold them accountable. Um, because you are absolutely correct. And so that was part of this discussion. You know, Marcus, if additional resources are needed, then we need to talk about that. And, um, you know, and, and John was in those meetings too. It's like, we, we can't, they just voice, we can't do it with the resources we have. So then we need to go back and talk about that.
Yeah.
So, I'll be happy to talk to Marcus too, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll let them know.
Well, I, I guess I, I'd make a motion that this planning commission communicate appropriately to the city manager that if enforcement is an issue, that we would recommend discussion with the city council to ensure proper resources. I, I just, I'm tired of that being the reason, especially because there's, there's no reason for us to be here. People are just gonna violate it anyways.
There.
Correct.
So, and people in the town deserve to rely on it as well.
Yes, right.
So I make that motion.
I would support it.
Got all the support, there you go.
And I, I absolutely think it's warranted, so.
I do too, yeah.
I mean, the, the situation with Chris Doyle, I mean, they knowingly, John communicated, this is a requirement. And they knowingly went against what they were told to do.
Oh, I was on the, yeah. Deal, and, yeah. They are penalizing ADA complacency.
Right.
Okay.
Ready for roll?
Anything else we need to complain about before we go? Oh, I'm sorry.
On that motion.
Basher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
I like that.
Good point.
Okay.
All the way through.
Thanks, Greg.
Uh, no other communications staff? Any public comments? You heard us ramble, no, I'm just- Oh, gosh, I should have known.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's since you brought up the enforcement with the Airbnbs, you know, and, or anything, right? For that matter, without any enforcement, then who cares what you do? Uh, I, I, and now I'm feeling like, you know, butterflies from coming to the meeting, because I really like that. You know, I like hearing what I'm hearing. Uh, but I also sit there and see that the enforcement is strongly lacking, so nobody cares, right? The house up on Pine Street still is rented out. And that was the, they came for, uh, zoning variance and they were denied. And so that didn't do anything. So, you know, it's like, you can make a deal with no deal, what, what's the deal? You know, it's, it's, that's no deal. You know, so then I've complained about the Airbnb for sure and everybody knows it. But I sit there and look at the enforcement and wonder what kind of enforcement's going on because I still look at these buildings that were used as short-term rentals that are still not sold, they're not occupied. It's like they're laying dormant, like they know something that I don't know, like they're gonna be able to get away with it. You know, so that bothers me. So when you talk about the enforcement, I'd sure like to see it come, knock 'em out.
As you heard, it bothers us.
Yeah, thanks, you guys.
Any other public comment? Since we're doing it. No, John?
I think I will.
I can tell, that's why I'm asking you.
Twenty-six years I've pushed the zoning ordinance, the blight ordinance, billing code and seven other titles.
I did it all. When we started the rental housing ordinance, we sent a letter to every household or property owner that was receiving a water bill that wasn't at that address. So I know he was an outside landlord, outside, you know, whatever. So we started our rental housing ordinance and got them all listed. And if they didn't comply, we send them a couple of letters and then an appearance ticket. We were authorized to issue appearance tickets and we went to court. And we won every single time. So there's plenty of enforcement that we went on for twenty-six years.
Mm-hmm.
I did it all, including every single blight, every single complaint.
Gee, you looking for a, a job?
I heard twenty-four thousand.
Doesn't pay much?
I heard twenty-four thousand dollars.
Doesn't pay a lot.
Yeah, I almost should, but. Anyway, it can be done.
It can be done. That is the attitude, can be done.
It can be done, right.
There, I'm bored, okay? No other brother, but, I know Joe is on-
Motion to adjourn.
Easy for you to say.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
That's where I was going, that you could go eat. Mayor just stopped me, like, uh-oh, what did I do?